All right, welcome everyone to the City Council Regular Meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is now 6:30 PM. Will everyone please stand and join us for the flag salute? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with due justice for all. Madam Clerk, can you please take role?
Councilmember Gama.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember McQueen Lejeune.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Perez.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Tonight's inspiration will be given by myself. I just want to say that today is my last day as mayor and it's been an honor to be the city's mayor. And why, I'm not sure if I'm the youngest ever. I know I'm one of the youngest in our history. What I do know is I'm the son of two immigrant parents who love me very much. I learned Spanish first before learning English and if I can make it up here, I believe that anyone can make it, regardless of their age, their ethnicity, or their gender. So I hope I can inspire more people in the future and not just our city, but cities all over the world to run for city council or mayor and learn how a city works because it's been a great experience. So just want to say thank you to everybody who's supported me and I hope I can inspire other people and maybe you might not be thinking about running for council, but maybe you know someone that does want to run for council and hopefully you can motivate them and support them and help them out in their journey. Thank you. We will now hear public comments not pertaining to any items on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. This process will be the same for comments pertaining on to each agenda item. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
We have one in person and one written. Joan Tharp.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, for the moment, City Council staff and public. I'm standing here as a representative of Surf Rider Ventura County and I just wanted to thank all of you for your support over the last couple of years in supporting our programs and campaigns to protect the world's oceans, waves and beaches, particularly ours here in Waenimi. I really appreciate everything and all your support, Mr. Spalding, Mr. Vega, several others. I will call you out in person for specific support that you've given us. Deputy City Manager Parets and Community Services Resources Manager Anna Hanley and reach for support in the installation of 23 cigarette butt canisters throughout the city, mostly along the promenade and in the parks. Surf Rider Ventura County has recycled over 7,555,000 cigarette butts in the last several years. Thank you, Mayor Martinez, Council and Mr. Spalding in adopting the ordinance that bans expanded polystyrene, which is a toxic pollutant that is ubiquitous in the cleanups that we do at the beach. Thank you, Councilman Gama, City Manager Vega and Deputy Public Works Director Camarillo and the Public Works staff particularly for your support for the beach cleanups we've done at Ormond in the past, currently and in the future. This year, we've taken four and a half tons of trash off the beach just from going in from the Waenimi side. That's not the total we've got out of Ormond. Quite a bit of trash. So we really do support or thank you for your support. We recently started testing ocean water quality at the Waenimi Pier via our Blue Water Task Force program. Test results are available every Friday at ventura.surf rider.org. And while this did not require any city support, we are happy to be able to test the water and provide our citizens with information about the water quality. In closing, I wish all of you a happy new year and a joyful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Okay, the written public comment, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Julian Lauffer and I am president of Seroptimus International of Channel Islands. I want to cordially invite you to the inauguration of our new club that includes the Port Waenimi area. The event is scheduled for Friday, January 19th at 5:00 PM. I will also follow up with a formal invitation. If you are not familiar with Seroptimus, we are an international organization whose mission is to work together to transform the lives of women and girls in our communities. We volunteer in our communities and fundraise so that we can assist women and girls in our community. If you are interested in learning more about our club or maybe even consider joining, we meet at 1,000 Town Center Suite 520 Oxnard on the second Thursday of each month at noon. You are more than welcome to attend one of our meetings to learn about what we do and answer any questions you may have. My contact information is 907-250-0549 or jlawfer@gildmortgage.net. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda?
They're moved.
Second.
Can we take a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Do any members of council have any conflicts of interest to disclose for any one item? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to our first presentation, the State of the City video.
Thank you, Mayor. And before we go to the video, we just wanted to take a minute. It's hard to believe that we're at the end of another year. We're at the end of 2023. And so we've prepared our State of the City and we've been releasing that to the community in recent weeks. But we also wanted to take the opportunity before we played it, play the video to just thank some of the key people that have helped us accomplish so much this year. Starting with thanking the City Council for its leadership this year. And I think some of the, all of the accomplishments that are listed in our State of the City start with the council's leadership. And it's particularly important during challenging times and the staff and myself appreciate the council's leadership. I also want to thank all of our staff who worked tirelessly to serve our community this year. The State of the City has a lot of the big projects we've done this year. But I also want to highlight the little things. And Right This Minute is a good example of some of those little things where, for example, with the rain coming in, our rec team is working as we speak to reschedule all of the Santa float streets to get, to make sure we get out to every street before the rain hits. We have our Public Works team, our Police Department, working together to clear channels and preparing the community for the coming rain. We have our Housing Department working to make sure that we're prepared for the urgent needs of our housing residents. Our Community Development Department working to coordinate permits and help businesses and residents with their projects. And then all of our internal services that help to make sure that we can pay for all those things and we have our IT and everything else to do those things. So the State of the City is a great presentation of some of the big things we got done this year. But I want to thank the council and our staff for not only that, but also the little things that we do every day. So we have a great team and they're here all the time working. So I just wanted to start with sharing that appreciation. And so with that, we will launch into our State of the City 2023.
It's a beautiful place to live. I absolutely love our city, which is why it's such an honor to stand before you today as we celebrate the progress and achievements of our remarkable city over the past year. Before we dwell into the exciting updates and future plans, I want to take a moment to express my gratitude to have served as your mayor here in the city of Port Waenimi. This year, we've seen changes, growth, and a steadfast commitment to making Port Waenimi an even better place to live, work and thrive. So without further to do, let's get started. This year, we welcomed James Vega as our new city manager, a local born and raised who has proven himself as one of the county's best with over 12 years of city management experience. We have also welcomed back Mike Federico as our police chief, a former police officer who is proud to have started his career here in Port Waenimi at a young age. He has been a part of our community for over 30 years and he has also the person who started the Police Explorer Program here back in the city in 1997. Communication. This year, we have started for the first time an Instagram page and we have also grown our Facebook page. Additionally, we now have a newsletter and are actively using our YouTube channel. Onto environmental safety. This year, we have banned EPS, which is very expensive to recycle and not very good for our environment. We also are in the process of providing clean and renewable electricity through the use of clean power lines to all of our residents. We have also updated our landscape guidelines to encourage drought tolerant plants. In regards to safety, we have added new safety measures, including new speed limits, road humps, city cameras, and the addition of a new motorcycle officer. Here in the city of Port Waenimi, we have continued to provide citywide sponsored events and have introduced some new events to the city, including the Waenimi Fun Run, which was a great success and it was a one and a half mile run where adults, children and teenagers and seniors can all participate. We also had a music and literature event, a health and wellness fair, the Halloween Spectacular Event, continued the Touch a Truck Event, movies at the parks, the Waenimi Beach Festival, and celebrated our 75th anniversary. We also have new city partnerships. We opened the new teen center here in Orbin Carpenter Community Center and we also opened up the gym on Tuesday nights and Saturday mornings. There are many new city upgrades. Just to mention a couple, the city chambers now has new TVs, new microphones, cameras, and a new system for us to provide the best service during city council meetings. We also have new employee tech that will help out with finances, business licenses and emails. Public Works also has new vehicles, including trash trucks, so they can now accept the green waste. Business opportunities. This year, we introduced two new cannabis lounges and are also expecting the arrival of the new grocery outlet store here in the Old Mary's Market and Old Trade Winds Market. We also have a library update. The parking lot has received some repairs and we're also proud to announce that the new mural will be in the front of the library here in Port Waenimi. In regards to public housing, we've added some new improvements to Mar Vista, including a new sidewalk and new windows for our residents. City Council is moving forward to the renovation of Bubbling Springs Park, which will boast two dog parks, new baseball fields, soccer fields, and a snack bar to support the Waenimi Little League. As we wrap up this reflection on our city's progress, I am filled with immense pride and gratitude because we've accomplished so much. As we move forward, let's carry this momentum with us. Let's continue to collaborate and innovate and strive for the future that reflects the strength and spirit of Waenimi. Thank you to every resident, every community partner and every individual who contributes to the vibrancy of our city. Your dedication is the driving force behind our success. In closing, let's embrace the opportunities that lie ahead, knowing that together there's no limit to what we can achieve. Port Waenimi, you make us proud and I'm excited for the chapters that are yet to be written in our city's history. Thank you and may the spirit of this city continue to shine bright. I just want to take the time to thank Councilmember Hernandez because I was new to my position and I didn't realize that. It was my responsibility to come up with the State of the City. And it was, we were running kind of late and I, and with City Manager Vega, we decided to make a video and I think it came out, came out great. Just want to say thanks to Councilmember Hernandez because I don't think we would add the video if it wasn't for her. Thank you.
Are you ready to move on?
Yeah, we can move on.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, we have two items, two council recognition items honoring and recognizing our outgoing 2023 Mayor Pro Tem Misty Perez and our 2023 Mayor Bobby Martinez. And so we have some things we'd like to present and give some opportunity to some of our speakers. I think we have several speakers here from other cities, council members and Supervisor's Office, Assembly Member's Office. We really appreciate them coming out on a Monday night. So we're going to make sure we give them the opportunity to speak if they'd like to. And so as we start the recognition, we're moving to recognition of Mayor Pro Tem Misty Perez. And we'd like to honor and recognize Mayor Pro Tem Misty Perez for her dedicated service and contributions this past year. We mentioned a lot of things in that State of the City video, but there's a lot of other things that Mayor Pro Tem Perez participated in and attended regular meetings, things like the landscape design guidelines that was mentioned was a committee for quite a while that had multiple meetings and took a lot of time to move that forward. And it's moved forward and it's on our agenda tonight to be complete. And so we want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Perez for her help in projects like the Landscape Design Guidelines Committee project, the serving on the City Port Joint Committee and representing the city in Washington DC this year. And it would be impossible to name all of the things, so that's just a few. But it has been an honor to work with you, Mayor Pro Tem. And we'd like to present you with a small token of appreciation and recognition of your service from the city and it is this desktop clock. And and before we call up some of our guests to speak, I'd like to present you with the certificates on behalf of several people who also wanted to be here but were unable to attend. We have a certificate from the Ventura City Council and Mayor Joe Schroeder, a certificate from the Moore Park City Council and Mayor Ennigrin. And with that, we will invite our speakers to attend. Do you want to? Or to speak, I'm sorry. We can, or go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Supervisor Viana Lopez.
Hi, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to join this reorganization meeting, but in particular to celebrate and recognize the incredible leadership of the city of Port Waenimi. And I've really enjoyed the past year to say that I've reached a full year of serving alongside all of you, but in particular Mayor Pro Tem Perez. As we began early in the year talking about Bubbling Springs Park and meeting out onsite and looking at what opportunities exist. And so it's really incredible to see the progress that has been made under your leadership. And I do look forward to our continued partnership on the Board of Supervisors and here with the city of Port Waenimi to support the residents of the city. And just want to thank you for being a very engaged and active Mayor Pro Tem, whether it's youth or mental health or public safety. You have definitely been advocating for so many of the important aspects of the city and just want to thank you and recognize your contributions this past year. So I have a certificate for you. I'll bring it up there. Thank you.
Patty Kiras from Assembly Member Bennett's office.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patty Kiras. I'm here on behalf of Assembly Member Steve Bennett. He's the representative for the 38th District, which includes the city of Port Waenimi. And on behalf of him, I just really want to extend his appreciation and thank you for the service as Mayor Pro Tem this past year. Your vision for the city of Waenimi, for the residents, the opportunities that you create, the success. We really thank you for that dedication to public service. And we look forward to any partnerships in the future. And once again, just want to thank you for all your contributions.
Sarah Ruiz from Congresswoman Brownlee's office.
Everyone, I unfortunately don't have a certificate for you, but I know the Congresswoman would love to send her sincere gratitude and thanks for all the service that you've provided the city of Port Waenimi this year. So thank you very much.
Kevin McNamy, Mayor of Thousand Oaks.
Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff. My name is Kevin McNamy and I am proud to say that I am a City Council Member in Thousand Oaks as of Tuesday. I have now relinquished the reins to someone else to do it for a full year. Thank you very much. I would like to say that 54 years ago, this wonderful city was founded, had a population of 33,000 people. Today, it boasts of a population of 22,000. It has blossomed. It has grown. 54 years ago, we had our harbor. But more importantly, we had the train system that connected the economy here of Port Waenimi and Ventura County with the rest of the world. Today, 54 years later, we have our deep harbor, which is key to economic growth. The one of three deep harbors we have in California, San Francisco, LA and Port Waenimi. Military 54 years ago was pretty much non-existent. But today, we have a combat-ready naval base that can go at the ready and Port Waenimi is a proud member of that. I have to say that much has changed in 54 years in Port Waenimi. You are an incredible economic vital link, not only to the county of Ventura, the state of California, the United States, but also the rest of the world. Because now we are no longer exporting grain, but fruits, vegetables, importing auto and home goods. You guys are an economic hub for this county, the state and this country, and I thank you for that. You have a strong city staff. You have much to be proud of. From Mayor Martinez's presentation, I could look forward to the continued growth of this wonderful city. And the people of this city should be very proud of the dedication all of you put into it. Myself as a council member, they pay us millions of dollars to do this job, don't they? It is essentially, to those who may not know, this is a volunteer position. We get a stipend if that. But you put in many more hours and maybe there's a labor issue here that we're getting paid below minimum wage, but that's another discussion. That said, on behalf of my mayor, Al Adam, myself as council member, my fellow council members, the people of Thousand Oaks, we wish to recognize our outgoing mayor, Bobby Martinez, and the Mayor Pro Tem Misty Perez with the Certificates of Recognition. I'd like to make an observation. We only have like a $2 million budget, something like that. Not a $2 billion like the county. We provide frames, Viana.
And Tony Trembley from Mayor of City of Camarillo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council. It's a privilege to be here tonight. It's very difficult to top Mayor McNamy on his remarks. I was struck during the video presentation by how many good things you have going on here in the city of Port Waenimi. And I'm very proud as a fellow council member who unlike Mayor, I just became mayor again last week. So now I'm in for the duration, Martinez, for the next year. But you have so many good things going here and going on here in this city. And I'm privileged to know several of you through our work on regional commissions and regional boards. And it all starts with your leadership. It all starts with the hours and hours and hours that I know each of you individually put in. And it's hard to find good people who use the best interests of their city as their north star to make their decisions. And all of you fit that bill. We're here specifically to honor you tonight, Mr. Mayor and Madam Mayor Pro Tem. And I want to thank you, thank all of you for your leadership coming from your not-so-distant neighbor over on that side of the Oxnard Plain. We're very proud of you. We're proud of our relationship with Mayor McNamy. I'm sorry, Councilmember McNamy said it best. Mayor McNamy said it best relative to your importance to all of us. And again, just wanted to thank you very, very much for your dedication. Camarillo does not provide frames. I don't know what to tell you. I'm sorry about that. But what can I tell you? Anyway, thank you very much. Congratulations.
And I apologize if I didn't recognize you, but Angelica Cisneros, is she here? No, right? Okay. So she did, they stopped by, representatives from Senator Lemon's office. I do have these certificates here for you, both Mayor Martinez and Mayor Pro Tem Perez.
I was going to suggest at some point, maybe you were going to say the same thing. Have you guys, the two of you down in the front with everybody who's honored you and take a photo?
Yeah.
Do you want to take a photo with your family first?
Yeah, we can do that. I want to say a few words before we do that. I just want to say it's been a blessing and an opportunity, a learning experience. And for somebody who's not very good at public speaking, this gave me an opportunity to practice that. And you know, it was an honor to help Mayor Martinez fill in where he wasn't able to. So I'm looking forward to the next chapter and this was a great experience. So thank you all.
Thinking we can pause for one minute to get some photos.
Yeah.
Do you guys let me know? I mean?
Okay, we'll do the photos with Mayor Pro Tem Perez and then we'll continue.
Okay.
I'm not in the picture, right?
You're going to come out looking like this.
And could we get one photo?
With the electeds, yeah. Yes.
So Mayor, we'll continue on with yours and then. And then maybe we could take a short break after we do yours to give people an opportunity to leave. But we'd now like to honor and recognize Mayor Martinez for his dedicated service and contributions this past year. As Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem have worked very closely on several of the projects, so several of the ones we already mentioned. They were collaborating on through this year. But also, we wanted to recognize Mayor Martinez for his focus on representing the city in numerous events this year, such as the city's first fun-run event. And also, as mentioned, represented the city with Mayor Pro Tem Perez on the port, the Joint Port City Committee, and in Washington DC this year to advocate for our Huonimi community. Mayor, likewise, it has been an honor to work with you. And I'd like to present you with a gavel plaque in recognition and appreciation of your service. And so with that, I know some people spoke to both. But if anybody did want to speak, we'd invite you back up to speak at this time.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to stand before you as your 5th District County Supervisor. And again, to thank you for your leadership as mayor. I really enjoyed your enthusiasm. The enthusiasm you bring to every space where there are discussions about the residents and what is going to make the lives of Port Huonimi residents better. And that is something that I've appreciated. And I know I will continue to see that and appreciate how you have worked really well with your council colleagues in representing the city in bringing a vision that is going to make our community stronger and better. So thank you for your service in every capacity. And I look forward to continuing to work with all of you in the coming year. And we'll also take an opportunity just to wish everyone a very happy holiday as we head into the new year. So thank you, Mayor.
Good evening. On behalf of Assemblymember Steve Bennett, I want to extend his congratulations upon your completion of your term as mayor. You know, the city of Huonimi had some really exciting projects, as we all saw. And I know there were also some challenges. So I really want to thank you for the leadership, for the work that you did with your fellow council members. We've seen some very exciting developments and projects. And I know that you'll continue to work hard for all the residents in order to keep our communities thriving. Thank you.
Hello again. I do have some remarks on behalf of the Congresswoman. So Congresswoman Julia Brownlee would like me to extend and recognize Mayor Martinez for his leadership and contributions to the city of Port Huonimi in his role as mayor. Congresswoman Brownlee has often said it is her greatest privilege to represent the people of the California's 26th District, which includes the wonderful city of Port Huonimi. This year, the Congresswoman was happy to celebrate the city's 75th birthday. And she looks forward to many more prosperous years ahead for the friendly city by the sea. The Congresswoman has worked alongside Mayor Martinez and the entire City Council to move our community forward, to do all that she can in partnership with all of you to improve the lives of all of those who call the city of Port Huonimi home. One noteworthy example of this work is the 15 million the Congresswoman secured for the dredging and maintenance at Channel Islands Harbor. Not only is maintaining navigable depths of the Chanticle critical for residents and local businesses that rely on the waterways, but the sand that is dredged is essential for beach nourishment down the coast, including on Silver Strand and Port Huonimi Beach. And as a community that boasts the picturesque views, this funding is also supports important preservation and conservation efforts. Congresswoman Brownlee extends her sincere appreciation to Mayor Martinez for his commitment and service to the residents of Port Huonimi. And she will continue to work with him and also the incoming mayor and the rest of the council to best serve the city. For his contributions to the city, I am pleased to present Mayor Martinez with this congressional recognition on behalf of the Congresswoman.
And then I don't know if you both are done or if there's any other comments that would like to come up right now?
Yeah, okay.
Over.
And likewise, I wanted to present the certificates from the city of Ventura and Mayor Joe Schroeder and City of Moore Park and Mayor Enigren to you as well.
I feel like I'm back at one of the assemblies, back in at Huonimi Elementary, getting all these certificates. I also want to say that I'm extremely blessed and honored and privileged to have served as the mayor of a city that I call my home, a city that I love. And I couldn't have done it without the support of our council, our Mayor Pro Tem, Misty Perez, our staff, and of course, the love and dedication of my family, my parents who are here today, Stephanie, my girlfriend, my fiance, and my brother and his fiancee, Vero, thank you so much. And I'm here to serve my community. I'm not going anywhere. I still got another year, all right? But just want to say thank you to everybody. And I appreciate you very much.
Before we take a break, do you want to give the, or would any council member like to say any words to either the mayor or Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, it's been a really good year. And I just want to thank both Mayor Pro Tem, Misty Perez, and the mayor, Mayor Martinez, for your service. And wish you a good next year. And Mayor Pro Tem, Martin, Perez, you are a great speaker. So, yeah, don't ever say that about yourself. Yeah, you're a good speaker. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a real pleasure to serve with both of you. We've accomplished a lot post-COVID, I think. It was kind of, thinking back a couple of years, it was a little different. And it's really nice to see everybody here participating in our community and witnessing a peaceful transition. But, you know, we all love each other. We all work hard. We love our city. And like Mayor Martinez said, we're not going anywhere. So continue to work hard for the benefit of our residents. And I know we'll continue to do that as a body.
Yes, and I'd just like to say just thank you for your service and your leadership. I think that Mayor Martinez, you this year did bring some things to the city. And I really enjoyed your innovative thinking, and I appreciate it. And Mayor Pro Tem Perez, I'm like Councilmember Hernandez. You're a great speaker. You show up for everything that you can show up for, and there's really nothing else you can do. You're doing a great job. So congratulations for your completion of your year. Looking forward to continue to work with you.
I think we'll move into a five-minute recess. Is that good for everyone? Or? Yeah, I'll go up and take some photos right now, too. I promise. Yeah, as part of the break. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and continue with tonight's regular council meeting. We're going to move on to council reorganization. And I'm going to have the city clerk conduct the election of the mayor.
The floor is now open for nominations for mayor.
May I nominate Mayor Pro Tem, Misty Perez, for mayor?
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote. So Councilmember McQueen Lejeune.
Yes.
Councilmember Gama.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Right now, Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Perez.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mayor Perez. Okay, I will go ahead and open the nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Martha McQueen Lejeune.
I will gladly second that.
Okay, I will do a roll call. Councilmember McQueen Lejeune.
Yes.
Councilmember Gama.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Pro, oh, I'm getting confused right now. Okay, well, the Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
And Mayor Perez.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem McQueen.
How do we do the seating? Did we just scoot, I thought we just scooted down.
You did just scoot down.
Those two chairs that are.
Okay, okay.
Congratulations.
That, we are ready to move on to our consent calendar.
That concludes the reorganization. Thank you all for showing up and participating. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. We will now consider items on the consent calendar, which will be enacted in one motion unless a council member has a request to remove an item for discussion.
Second. Oh, you're looking for a motion?
Anyone who wants to remove?
Move to approve.
Does anyone want to remove an item for discussion?
No.
So do we have a motion?
I'll second Gama's, Councilwoman Gama's motion.
Madam Clerk, will we have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, I did miss one thing, which was if you or Mayor Pro Tem wanted to say any words with the reorganization.
Oh, let's get to work.
Okay, that works.
Moving on, so we're now going to. Looks like next is a public hearing.
Yes, thank you. And we'll have our Community Development Director, Tony Stewart, lead us through the landscape design guidelines, which was a long process where the Community Development Director worked with the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, but also with our different community representatives to try to work together to come up with new landscape design guidelines that are going to position us better for the future. So with that, I'll turn it. So with that, I'll turn it over to, um, uh, Mr. Stewart for a presentation.
Great, uh, thank you, City Manager Vega, and good evening, council, staff, audience. Congratulations, Mayor Perez, and Mayor Pro Tem McQueen Lejeune, and also, uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Martinez. It's been a pleasure working with you so far, and, uh, get to talk to about two of you at least here shortly. But, uh, yes, so this is, um, the culmination of a little bit over a year, where the, um, committee that was formed is now ready to bring before you, uh, a new updated landscape ordinance as well as landscape design guidelines. So back in nineteen ninety-three, uh, the city established, uh, some landscape design guidelines that are currently in use, sort of. Um, and along with the guidelines, a citywide theme for what they call the tropical seaside village. And most of us are well aware that that consists of, you know, the coral trees, the wood signs, and all the little green posts, uh, holding up those signs and just scattered around the city, the lights that you see with them, and et cetera. However, since that time, uh, new water efficient laws have been enacted by the state. Um, and landscaping within many of the homeowners associations, as well as just throughout the city, including our own properties and, and mediums and whatnot, have become overgrown and in need of replacement. So, uh, last September, uh, the city council directed staff to form a committee to work with staff in the city's contract, uh, landscape architect sitting next to me here, uh, to establish an updated set of guidelines. And along with that, uh, came the, uh, landscape ordinance, because that's the mechanism to enact, uh, the guidelines. So the committee itself, I, I want to introduce here now, consisted of, uh, our now mayor, uh, Misty Perez, as the primary city council representative, along with former Mayor Martinez as the council alternate. Um, and thank you both for, uh, attending most of our meetings that we had, if not all of them. Uh, we also had, uh, representing, uh, the Anacapa View Beach Homes, as well as what we call the, uh, uh, the HOA Coalition is Jan Burke. Uh, Sharon Cloris was also representing Anacapa View Beach Homes, but also the business community, in this case, Ocean Bivillion. Uh, Tebow Robert, uh, representing Beachport Villas, Joan Tharp, our community member at large, and Rod Norton, also a community member at large and former Public Works, uh, landscape staff. Staff that worked on this, uh, by my, including myself, uh, included our former landscape supervisor, Leland Baxter, uh, and then after Leland left, uh, the city, uh, our interim, uh, direct, Public Works Director Fred Camarillo, and also, um, Principal Engineer, uh, Charles Cable stepped in to fill, uh, Leland's void. We also had, uh, Jose Coyote, our associate planner, and he'll be the one that, uh, gets to implement a lot of these for, uh, or at least working with the applicants when they come in. And then, of course, we have the city's consulting landscape architect, Brian Broderson. Uh, during the course of, uh, the, the period between October of last year and November of this year, uh, the committee met eleven times. And towards the end of that, uh, two public workshops and a survey, which were conducted both in English and Spanish, were also, um, also done, and that was to gain public input on, uh, the committee's ideas and recommendations. So I'm gonna talk about the landscape ordinance, um, I gotta do the dry stuff here, and then I'll turn over the fun stuff to, to Brian. But, um, so in order to implement the guidelines, uh, the landscape ordinance also needed to be revised and updated, uh, not only to bring it into conformance with state law, but also just to make sure that our new guidelines could be implemented. Um, the other problem with our current, uh, landscape ordinance, or standards, I should say, is that we don't really have an ordinance. Uh, instead, we have standards that are scattered in several places throughout the, um, existing municipal code, and so we're aiming to, uh, correct that. So in summary, the, uh, updated landscape ordinance, uh, contains definitions that are specific to the standards, uh, provides standards where landscaping is required, and general planting standards. It updates maintenance requirements, and it adds specific standards for, uh, the maintenance and/or removal of trees, as well as their preservation. But also of importance is, uh, the processes that the landscape ordinance now sets forth for processing applications, primarily, uh, modifications to previously approved plans. This, as I mentioned before, uh, many of our landscape, uh, plans and our HOAs and whatnot are thirty to forty years old. They were overplanted when they were initially, uh, put in, and they are definitely in need of replacement, as we're hearing from many entities. So, we looked at, uh, how to simplify and reduce the cost for processing these modifications. So currently, if an applicant wishes to make revisions to their existing landscape plan, say for their homeowners association or shopping center, but it's going to be minor and it doesn't change the overall character of the approved plan, uh, we, uh, process what we call a minor modification. And while it's a staff level approval, it's, it's still a little complex, requires, um, uh, staff reports and whatnot for the file. And then for applications for substantial changes, uh, that will, and we're going to prob- be probably seeing those come through with our, um, homeowners associations are really wanting to do some whole scale, uh, new landscaping. We currently require what we call a modification to the existing plan development permit, and that requires your approval at a public hearing. And then, uh, after all of that is said and done, if tree removals are being proposed, uh, then that requires a subsequent tree removal permit. So what the, uh, staff and the committee came up with were, uh, the, the cur- the new processes that I'm going to be discussing here. So for the ones with the minor changes to their landscaping, uh, the, uh, proposed concept would be similar to what we call a ministerial permit, or AKA, an over the counter permit. It would be, um, basically, um, pretty quick, uh, run through either by myself or Mr. Coyote. Um, and because it would be a, a fairly simple process to go through, uh, this could save an applicant, um, with these smaller projects, you know, most likely at least eight hundred dollars, if more, not more. While it doesn't sound like much, for a small project, that at least could be used, uh, for new landscaping materials and whatnot. For the more complex projects, um, instead of going through the major modification process with the city council approval, uh, instead, uh, it is envisioned that a landscape review committee would be, uh, created. And we have a similar process now with the design review committee, uh, where the, the process is called the administration, uh, administrative permit process, and it still requires a staff level hearing, but it's a much simpler process to go through than, uh, the major modification. And so the landscape review committee, which we, uh, would have, um, made up of myself or designee, most likely Jose, uh, the police chief who would be looking, or his designee, because he'd be looking at, uh, safety aspects of the new landscaping. Uh, the public works director, designee, our new arborist, uh, as well as our, um, the landscape architect again, plus our programs manager, uh, in the community development department. And that, again, is similar to the makeup, but is a little bit different than our, uh, current design review, uh, committee. And because of the, uh, the simplification of the process, it would save most likely several weeks, um, in just processing time. And we estimate, uh, the savings could be upward of about three, uh, three thousand dollars, with the exception of, uh, uh, Brian's cost. Um, but, um, that could also be, um, uh, modified, or at least kept to a minimum, uh, based on our new, um, uh, checklist that we'll be talking about in a little bit. Uh, the other thing to, uh, note, uh, of importance is that both of these would incorporate tree removal permits with them, so there would be no more need for a separate tree removal permit or, uh, application fee. So again, for projects that are going to be doing some significant, um, um, revisions, tree removals, replacements, et cetera, this could be a significant cost, you know, possibly well over ten thousand dollars, for instance, with some of these large projects. And so, with regard to, uh, actually getting the planting done, uh, and the main reason why the committee was formed was to look at updating our current guidelines. Now, our guidelines are nineteen ninety-three guidelines or this document. It's, um, pretty much made up of many, many, many pages of details pertaining to wood posts and light fixtures and whatnot. And so what we ultimately came up with was a much more user-friendly, simpler, um, uh, less complex, uh, set of guidelines that will also be, um, not as restrictive. Uh, in other words, we're no longer, uh, the committee is no longer recommending that a single coral tree themed, um, design for everything in the city be, uh, be imposed, basically, instead. Uh, depending on where the, um, where the project is located, uh, for instance, if it's a city-owned, you know, um, street or right of way, uh, obviously Surfside Drive is a little bit different than, say, Channel Islands, and so there could be a different, uh, design palette for each one of those areas. And also, this would allow each HOA or each shopping center to have their own unique, uh, stamp, uh, based on what their, what their wants are, basically. And so the guidelines are, uh, updated, uh, in six different sections. And the first one was the introduction and applicability, which is, um, pretty self-explanatory. The second set, or a second section would be general requirements, and these are more, like I said, more general, where we're talking about, um, making sure that, uh, landscaping is drought tolerant, uh, that the plants are also climatically app- appropriate for the, uh, particular location in Surfside Drive versus Pleasant Valley or, or Channel Islands. Uh, this also talks about, uh, planting for certain situations, such as utility screening, planting for shade, et cetera, and it also touches on irrigation, and also when irrigation may not be necessary at all, once the plants are established. The third section talks about guidelines for residential landscaping projects, and this would be for single-family and multifamily projects, as well as project entries. The fourth would be for all non-residential projects, and this also touches on buffers between residential and non-residential properties, as well as parking lots, including those for multifamily developments. The fifth, uh, section is designing guidelines for city-owned rights of way and properties. And originally, the, when we started this, um, project, we had our city arborist with us, and, uh, the committee was going down, uh, the pathway of, uh, looking at some specific designs for locations, you know, say, project and major entries into the city or whatnot, uh, especially to coincide with city's, uh, seventy-fifth anniversary. Uh, however, since the arborist, uh, left us during the process, uh, the committee felt it was best to wait until a new arborist came on board, but before we came up with specific, um, designs for certain areas, um, because again, you know, they could be subject to change. And the nice thing about guidelines is they're easier to change than land, than ordinances. And so when we do have those, um, finally set, uh, we can go ahead and bring this back, uh, to you for a modification with a, you know, modification to the resolution of approval. So, uh, the other thing that we were looking at at the time was, uh, new signage, uh, for the city. And, uh, what the committee came up with was the idea that, um, obviously, new signage citywide is going to be an expensive endeavor, uh, because there are, uh, I, I think, um, Mayor Perez, you pointed out that you didn't realize how many of those green posts and signs were out there until you really started looking at them and realizing how many there are. So in the interim, uh, the, uh, committee, uh, decided that, uh, at least the, the green paint should be replaced with more of a weathered gray to reflect our seaside, um, uh, location here. And that at least at, uh, primary entries into the city, the, uh, the existing wood signs, as they need replacement, would be replaced with a new, um, kind of fancy-looking aggregate, uh, where you have different layers of the aggregate concrete with a simplified, um, font for the lettering. Uh, however, um, again, uh, waiting until we get the arborist on board and some designs tied down, um, the committee decided to, uh, not, pun intended, to not set in stone, uh, the, the new, uh, sign design. But we will, uh, staff will go back and, and hopefully hire a, um, sign, uh, company to work with us, uh, within these parameters, to come up with the new, uh, sign program for the city, uh, which should also include wayfinding signs to some of our, um, uh, uh, major landmarks here in the city, such as the beach, Ocean B Pavilion, uh, better signage for the library, and the community center, and parks, et cetera. So hopefully, we'll be, be bringing back something to you, uh, later in twenty twenty-four to address these, uh, final items. And then the last section has to deal with, uh, maintenance requirements, and that provides recommendations and guidance and details. There are also three appendices, uh, appendix A, uh, is the plant lists. And it's important to keep in mind that, uh, these plant lists are recommended, they are no longer mandatory or whatnot. So, um, and, and they're quite vast, uh, they are primarily either, um, drought tolerant and/or native, or at least adaptable. Uh, but they give the user a wide variety to choose from. Um, however, if, uh, a user, um, comes up with a species that may not be on the, uh, plant palette, but is, um, close enough, you know, would work, uh, we'll certainly consider that as well. So again, a lot of flexibility with our, uh, new plant lists. Uh, appendix B is what we call the guide to the landscape plan approval process. And what that is, is a fairly detailed guide, uh, to help an applicant put together their application package. Um, and if they do it correctly, obviously, it requires a less review by staff, and, uh, therefore, lower costs from our, um, from our staff, as well as our landscape architect, uh, here. Um, and this will also be used by the LRC to evaluate the applications submitted. And then finally, uh, appendix C is, uh, rather than page after page of details, it's, uh, four details at this point for berms and planting. So with that, I'm going to, uh, turn it over to Brian to kind of, um, pass all the design and just show, uh, basically tell you and the audience what we've really been doing as a committee for the last, um, fourteen months or so, uh, when coming up with the new guidelines here. So Brian?
Thank you, um, I will be, I suppose, walking you through a brief history of, of, of what we've done on the committee. I'd, I'd like to start by just saying it's been a pleasure working with Tony and, and with all the committee members. Um, it was a great group of people, people showed up, people gave positive and, and, and good input. And, um, even when we had the community workshops, there were people that offered, uh, some very good comments, and I think it was just a very nice process. So this is where we started, um, and you can see that's, looks like somebody typed that on a typewriter, the, um, nineteen ninety-three guidelines. The original guidelines, uh, included trees for every street in the city, uh, in the back. It includes a, a theme which talks about a sense of place, and we didn't wanna lose that. We wanted to maintain the unity and the sense of place that exists in Port Weneme. We don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater, if you will. But, but at the same time, uh, it included the word tropical, and that's the one that kind of jumped out at me, because we, we're in a whole different time period. We're in a time period where suddenly we've, we've realized that, even though a lot of the people who settled here may have come from the east coast or from a place where they had mowed lawns and hedges and things, that maybe that doesn't really make sense anymore. And of course, going through the drought, I think that came closer to home for many people. And I think most of the community understands that we, we can have a wonderful, vibrant landscape, but it can be drought tolerant, and I don't even care about the word drought tolerant as much as I care about sustainability. Because if you have a sustainable landscape, that means there's less cost in maintenance. That means there's less inputs, and the key is inputs, how much are you putting into it? Fertilizer, all those things, uh, you know, the usual example is turf grass, where you're fertilizing and mowing and maintaining. If that's in an important place, like a sports field or somewhere that's being used a lot, great. But in places where we're, we're not really using those areas, it, it's, you know, it's more progressive thinking now to say, hey, what would be here, or what would be beautiful by this, by the, by the shore? We, we live right by the sea. So with that in mind, we sort of developed a, a, uh, an idea of, of a concept. Sorry, I'm not very much for reading anything. Um, so we started with existing conditions, and, uh, we might as well just start with the coral tree, 'cause that's the, sort of the, um, the, the most misunderstood element of the landscape here in Port Weneme. So they said, hey, let's plant coral trees, they're beautiful, they have these incredible flowers, and they thrive. But what, the part of the information that wasn't there was that they, they don't need water. Once you plant them and they're established, don't water them, but we watered them. So what happened was the trees grew a little faster than normal. And also what happened is that through, um, arbor practices, the pruning, they were pruned in a way that caused them to become taller and, and, and open, and, and in a way that we really don't have a way to prune them down or make them smaller. Also, the species that was chosen for, um, for all the, you know, the main entry points, and the medians are, you know, as a species, it gets quite large. So with all that information, um, we said, well, we gotta do something different. We have to think of, of, of other opportunities. And, and also, we have the large eucalyptus and the medians, um, which actually are very stable, because they're tall, and they tend to hold each other together. So there, it's, it's, uh, a shallow-rooted tree, but when grown the way they. So it's a shallow-rooted tree, but when grown the way they, excuse me, and when grown the way they are now, it's a pretty, it's a pretty stable condition at the moment. So we decided to leave that alone. And then, we do have on the parkways and that slide on the left, on the right side of that is a sycamore underneath power lines, and that was also seen as something to address by the city arborist Layland, and we'll continue to address that. A left slide is another example of the gigantic coral trees that are overgrown because they're being watered in turf. And then, on the right, just a quick one, a city hall. And then, another big issue that we wanted to make sure we addressed were the HOA, where the homeowners associations, where they have a landscape which has been there a long time, was done at a different time period, perhaps, well, it still occurs, but where landscape architects tend to overplant. And so, too many trees, not enough rooting space, and now, years later, they're suffering the consequences of that, and they're like, what do we do? And so, we have to have a plan in place that helps them to renovate their landscapes. So a new vision, something different. We did, I did review the plans for the harbor, and they wanted to do something really different and really drought tolerant. And so, we paid attention to that. We looked at it. We looked at what was on their list. We included many of the plants that are on the landscape list for the new port. Then we also looked at how we could reduce the maintenance in some of the city-planted streets and things like that. How could, you know, what do we keep? Which parts of the signs should we keep? How can we renovate them? And looked at typical streets and what we want to do to get trees out of power lines, et cetera. And also, I think it's still a little bit of a potential project, but the idea of bringing back some of the plantings to the seaside right against the beach, which requires a very specific type of plant palette. And we do have plants in our plant list, and they are noted that way, that they can be used in that, what we call the first exposure zone, a lot of salt, a lot of wind. So, goal being to gradually replace the coral trees, but if we're going to replace the coral trees, what do we replace them with? And what the committee talked about when we came up with was this notion of instead of just coral trees, the option of perhaps a smaller coral tree type or a variety of different accent trees, which will all be in scale and stay in scale potentially, and are drought tolerant and are adapted to our seaside community. We do live in a pretty amazing place horticulturally and unique, so we want to embrace that. So, a variety of flowering trees and trees with interest. And then, what about the other plantings? What does a seaside planting look like? Well, if you, in a classic design sense, you combine color and texture and variety, and you arrange it in certain ways, and you can quote something very, very nice. We have a lot of great options, and a lot of the seaside succulents are really nice aloes and things that are not native, but sort of look native. If you've been to Monterey, you've seen lots of aloes. So, just running you through a few slides to kind of get the idea. Another thing we talked about was carbon sequestration, some of the environmental aspects of plants. And a lot of people don't know it, but the grasses actually are incredible carbon, carbon sequestration vehicles. Trees are the best. Grasses are really great, and they're very adaptable. So we'd like to encourage people to include grasses and other plants as well. Just going to run through these real quick. There's lots of color. The one on the right is a native plant, vervina. The one on the left is an adapted plant that most of us are familiar with, Pride of Madera. And then, we talked about the potential for something low and green and a grass substitute that is evergreen. And this is a plant called corapia or lipia nodiflora. It's seen in lots of places now. They're using it in parkway and median plantings with, in developments and things. But it's a tight ground cover. It does attract a lot of bees, but it's an option. And then, here's lots, there are lots of native grasses with different colors and textures. And then, well, this was that same sign we saw a few minutes ago. This is the concept drawing for a new sign. And once again, I'll go back to sustainability, the notion being what are sustainable materials in a seaside environment? Because here, because we have salt and we have the wind and the cold, a lot of times, wood does not last like some other things. Concrete being very, very durable is certainly a good option. And if it's poured in layers and aggregates can be added, it can create a really beautiful texture. The one on the right is a installed, concrete installation like that. The one on the left, of course, is an illustration of what that might could be. And once again, that's in development. And then, what would happen if we were at city hall and suddenly, we said, hey, maybe we should have a demonstration garden at city hall and make city hall look like the rest of the city? And all the grass went away, and we used the corapia to create that big sweeping sense of having the turf and open space, but included a lot of native plants and things. So that's a brief introduction. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. So we just had the report presented to us?
Have a little bit more.
Oh, okay.
Really quick. I'm sorry about that, but actually, just real quick, this project is exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act. And before we get to the recommendation, we have at least two of our committee members here who I'd like to actually, who have offered to speak, and because this is their project, I'd like to call them up. So that would be Jan Burke and Joan Tharp. Joan is coming up first, and I'd just like to give them the opportunity to speak real quick before we get to the recommendation.
First of all, I would like to congratulate the new mayor and the mayor pro tem.
Thank you.
And I did want to say, I echo what Brian said about it being a really good team of people. Things were considered. People's inputs were considered. We had a good representation from the experts, from staff, from homeowners, from HOAs. So it was really, it was a real pleasure to serve on that team. I do want to say that the things that people consider all the time, you look on social media and the public says, oh, no, what's the city doing now? It's going to cost a ton, and they're going to disrupt everything, and you know, what's going on here and what do they want to do? So things that were kept top of mind for us were the costs, because everybody's concerned about costs, the sustainability, maintenance for the city, and also consideration for the cost of the HOAs, consideration for individual homeowners and what that means to them, you know, is do I need to change my landscaping at my house? And if I do, do I have to, you know, go to the city to get it approved? So it was very well considered. I don't think Tony thought it was going to take a full year, but it was well worth the time because I think it was very well thought out and very well planned, and I am really proud to be part of the team. So hopefully, you will consider and adopt it at your next meeting.
Congratulations, Mayor Perez and Mayor Pro Tem. We're excited to see what the new year brings us. Tonight, I'm here representing the landscape design committee, but also the Huonimi HOA Coalition. We came to you about a year and a half, almost two years ago, and some of our members are here tonight as well. It's the holidays, so some are sick and some are with families. But this was a very big top-of-mind project for us. And we, and I, and we came to you with our mission, and I'll repeat the mission tonight. A year and a half ago, we introduced ourselves as a grassroots organization. We shared our mission as follows: to provide Huonimi HOA representatives a forum to identify and address common issues and to collaborate with local government officials in the development and implementation of policies and projects that impact HOAs and the quality of life for our city. Today, we have about 50% of the HOAs represented in our coalition. It's about 3,000 homeowners. And when we came to you in May of '21, we shared our concerns specifically about landscaping because we had so many problems with these overgrown trees and the policies were outdated. And we had watered intensive plants environmentally inappropriate for our community and for our climate. In addition, we had shared our concerns for the untenable permitting process and policies that were overreaching for nonprofit organizations like HOAs. So you heard us, and we really appreciate the fact that you heard us. And we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to have a seat at the table, to be a part of this process. I think it was a great process that we went through. We had a lot of robust discussions, didn't always agree, but that's okay, you know? We walked through it. We, I think the most important thing is we all had the same goal of wanting to do what's right and come out with the best possible project and a best possible process. So I commend Tony, Brian, staff, the council. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. The HOA Coalition has reviewed all the guidelines, the ordinance, and the policies and the permits, and we're here tonight to support this, and we hope that you will too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so with that, it is recommended that the city council open the public hearing and take testimonial and documentary evidence, then close the public hearing and consider that evidence. And three, introduce by title only, waiving full reading, in ordinance, pending Article X, Sections 102, 03 F1 and 102, 03 F2, 103, 02, 104, 83 I, 1A, and 104, 83 I2, 105, 44B, and 105, 82C3 of the Port Huonimi municipal code pertaining to landscape standards with adoption to follow at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. And four, after considering the evidence, adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Port Huonimi approving the citywide landscape design guidelines, which is project number PH9-912. Five, make a determination that the project is exempt under CEQA. And six, take such additional related action as may be desirable. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you, and we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Stewart. So we just had our reports. So Madam Clerk, do you have proof a publication is required by law and a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff? Only questions will be taken at this time. Comments and discussion will be heard later. Go ahead, Mr. Guma.
Thank you, Mayor Perez. I'm glad you have this photo up because I'm a huge fan of coastal oak trees, and I noticed that there's two memorial coastal oak trees that aren't in this drawing. So is this suggesting that we're going to remove those trees or?
Oh, no. The intent would be to keep what's good and...
Are coastal oak trees good for this environment?
Absolutely. They are. They're slow growing, and they typically grow slightly more inland, but they do exist in this environment.
Yeah, and I'm just, would like to echo that there's 38 HOAs in our community. All five of us up here are a part of HOAs, and we all face similar and very similar issues in our HOAs. And I think it's a great example of a community coming together and establishing the homeowners' association, coalition, and I hope that we could get more involvement. And yeah, I really appreciate all the information you provided tonight. And my only concern is the smaller HOAs that are, I know of a couple that are very close to here that they have three...
Guma, we're going to leave, we're going to leave, yeah, doing questions right now. We're going to leave comments for later. So hold that thought. Do you have any more questions?
My question is, is there any, is there any assistance or any way to help the smaller HOAs where the cost to deal with the problems are very large?
Again, it depends on exactly what they're proposing, but some of these smaller HOAs may have relatively small projects that they're proposing, in which case, again, the new minor process only costs a couple hundred dollars, basically. It's a very simple process to go through. There's no separate tree removal permit required or anything like that. So it should be, again, a fairly simple, cost-effective process for them to go through for the city, and that way, that cost savings can then go back towards their actual projects.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Perez, and thank you, staff, for your work, and thank you, Mayor Perez and Councilwoman Martinez for your service on the committee, and thank you to members of our community, Joan and Jan, and the others who helped make this happen. A lot of good work, I can see, is put into this. My question is, I have a few questions. What is the weathering gray? When you're talking about the color weathering gray, is that the concrete color you showed us in one of the signs? You said the signage was going to be changed, and we're going to get away from the green posts, and we're going to go to a weathering gray color. Is that what you meant, the cement color?
Well, it would be a shaded gray. Again, working with the sign contractor, we'll actually bring a specific color back to you or shades to select from, basically.
Okay, because I thought, yeah, I thought the picture looked great. All right, thank you. The coral trees, what about the coral trees that exist within HOAs? Are there, will they fall under the same requirements for removal, eventual removal? Or what would be the conditions that they would have to be removed?
Well, the thing to keep in mind that's very important about these guidelines, again, is that they're flexible, they're not mandatory. So if an HOA wants to remove their coral trees or needs to, this is set up to really assist them do that more easily. But there is nothing that's mandating that they do so. So it's really up to the individual HOA.
Thank you. And then, the process, the question, I have a question on the process. The landscape review committee will consist of staff, from what I understand, and these are going to be considered public hearings. Does that mean that they will be open to the public?
Yes. Yes, they will be noticed just like with the 300-foot radius. And keep in mind also, I didn't mention it earlier, these are also appealable. So if somebody had a problem with the decision, they could always appeal it to the city council.
And then, for the HOA Coalition, what's next? That's kind of a rhetorical question, but I hope that you stay intact, because there's lots more things that you can help the city with. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, you have any questions? Okay. So we're going to open the public hearing and take public comment. The public hearing is now open for public comment at 7:57. Are there any public comments regarding this item?
We have a public comment from David Skriebner.
Well, congratulations are in order.
Thank you.
I hope you enjoy your time doing this, and I'm sure you did a great job. I moved to Huonimi in 1880, and we moved into Surfside Village. And the thing that struck me to start with was how beautiful the place was then with all the trees. I remember years ago, Tammy Fig talked to me and said, she's a compliance officer, said basically, you know the minute you drove into Huonimi because it changes. And she's absolutely right. So we've had this beautiful place, but unfortunately... So we've had this beautiful place, but unfortunately, too many trees, wrong trees, wrong places. And now, 45 years later, we're having to pay the price for it. So, you know, we started the HOA coalition basically to deal with trees. We'll get on to other matters, but after some bumps in the road, we got the committee started. You guys have done great work. I'm really pleased we read the proposal. I think it answers most of our concerns, and hopefully we can, you know, move towards a more sustainable environment that looks better and, you know, don't have the long-term problems. I think all the HOAs are still looking at having to get rid of huge trees, creating huge problems, and so this is going to go on for a while, but we have a plan. And I think it, it looks like the whole thing's going to work to really well. The only two criticisms I had about the proposal that I read, the first one is, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I don't know, I don't have a view property. But one of the rules was you couldn't, if you had a view and a tree was blocking it, essentially, that wasn't a reason to take out the tree. I think if I was living in Surfside Four and my ocean view was obstructed, I'd be pretty upset about it. So I'm wondering if there's something that can be done to change trees around. Maybe that's part of the, the major modification to do that. But no, I don't have a view, so just looking at it, I thought this, this doesn't seem right. And the other was kind of a minor one, which is, one of the requirements is a 24-inch box tree was the only size that was listed there. And it's my understanding, after dealing with arborists, that pretty much any tree you plant can be the same size over time. And there are times where smaller trees are going to do better than bigger trees because of root space. So I, I would maybe consider that putting that up to the arborist to make a decision about. I don't know not anything about this stuff, other than it looks beautiful or it's a big problem, but you, you know. So I would like to encourage maybe a modification to let an arborist make that decision. Otherwise, it's, I'm very thankful, and I'm really happy to live in a city where it's small, you listen to what we have to say. It doesn't always go easy to start with, but over time, pretty much everything we've come up to this council and asked for, you guys have done. So thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to close the public hearing. The public input has been concluded. Are those, are there any written comments? Sorry.
No written comments.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing, the time being 8:01 PM. We have before us a recommendation to introduce by title only, waiving full reading, in ordinance, amending Article 10? Oh my gosh, my mind just blanked on, X is 10. Article 10, Sections 102, 03 F1 and 102, 03 F2, 103, 02, 104, 83 I, 1A, and 104, 83 I2, 105, 44B, and 105, 82 C3 of the Port Wainimi Municipal Code pertaining to landscaping standards with adoption to follow at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. And after considering the evidence, adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Port Wainimi approving the citywide landscape design guidelines, project number PH 912, and make a determination the project is exempt from CEQA, and take additional related action that may be desirable. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll move approval of the recommendations 1 through 6.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you for the good work.
Is it time for comments?
Yes.
So one of the areas that was problematic for my HOA and still is, and there was a picture, there, there was, I don't know the name of the tree, but I think it's a ficus or something, but it's planted in a three-foot wide area, and the roots are coming over the sidewalk. And I know once we started listening to arborists, we, I think it was determined that that was a poor planting decision. Okay, and so my HOA, we have a assessment, special assessment, to deal with all these tree issues. And when those trees are removed, what is going to go in its place? Because my understanding is that the tree should have never been planted there to begin with. So it's kind of like a conundrum, so I didn't pronounce that right. But how does this new landscape design address that?
Could you bring that up? Because that was one of the, the big issues that came up to the committee and as part of our deliberations and how to solve that. There, there is flexibility designed into the new ordinance and the guidelines that allow an HOA. It isn't a one-for-one absolute replacement rate because of the overplanting that I mentioned when I was trying to orient you folks. So that's where a reasonable plan that's presented to the city for renovation of a, of an HOA, for instance, we would evaluate that for applicability and whether it's in substantial conformance with the intent of the original design. The original design for most of the HOAs is to have trees and have a beautiful environment for the residents, right? And what happens is if you have the wrong tree in the wrong place, it becomes a problem. You can take it out, well, you can replace it with a tree that grows 15 feet tall, or you can replace it with a plant that grows 115 feet tall. One of them is appropriate, one of them is not. In some places, a tree should have never been, because we know that there are utility issues and all sorts of conflicts that can occur with trees over time. So we did kind of bake that into the, into our findings, so that there would be a process that isn't absolute. Because the old code basically just said, if you're taking a tree out, you have to put the same tree back, the same tree, not just, not just the, a certain sized tree or location. You had to put it in the place, and it had to be the exact same tree. We know that that's a problem, and so that was, that was taken care of.
That's really gratifying for a city council when we, you know, trying to make things better, and it sounds like we did. I'm a, I'm a, watching the port do their big landscape project right now, and I'm just amazed when a 40-year-old coral tree is removed, that the, the amount of roots left behind, and it turns into like almost grass when they grind it out. And then it's my understanding that, you know, the work is to get all that material out before you replant, because nothing will grow because of the deterioration. Is that true?
Well, when you take a tree out, you have to remember that it's, it's an organic, it's a carbon-based organism, and all of that material that makes up that tree, once it's no longer living, is going to be broken down by organism, by microorganisms, and it's going to, it's going to basically disappear.
Over time.
Literally just disappear over time. So if you leave a, a big, if you don't stump grind and you have a big root system, then the ground is going to sink over time. So that's a huge consideration in a tree removal.
When you remove a coral tree, and I'm picking on them, and you don't have the money to, to excavate all the root material out, then you're setting up a situation where a tree won't do well there?
That's correct, because it needs soil contact. It needs a mixture of, of mineral and, and, and carbon-based materials. So if you think about the mulch, or how much, how much amendment you put in your soil, it's usually, you know, 4%, you know? In this case, it could be more than 50% if the tree's still there. So really, part of the tree removal process to be, to be completed, it has to be, has to be done thoroughly.
Very thoroughly, and it's not cheap, I understand. And that, and that was my comment earlier, is that, you know, some of these smaller HOAs, I just wonder how they're going to deal with it financially, because I know it's difficult. Anyways, I appreciate the work that you've all done, and I'm just really gratifying to have something that our community is buying into. And I, I think it's, was really needed, and I really appreciate everybody's work on this.
Anyone else have any discussion or comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McQueen-Lejeune?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to item number 12, which is to, do I need to read just for future reference?
Mayor Perez, may I ask one more? Will be any chance to make any amendments to the policy, or are we just moving forward with what we've just approved?
It will come back for a second reading at the next meeting, and let's.
Right, the policy itself was adopted, was to be adopted via resolution, so that can be amended at any time effective the date of the resolution. The ordinance, however, any amendments to the ordinance would have to be read into the record tonight. Otherwise, we'd need to go back for a first reading at second reading. We can't substantively change an ordinance on second reading.
Is there a way to make, like, Mr. Scribner made a couple suggestions, how do we, how do we look into those? Or can we at this point?
There's going to be, there's several follow-up steps. Several of the items are going to, would have to come back to council, like even just the, like, Mr. Stewart mentioned, even just like picking the gray color that could go on the signs and things like that will all have to come back. So I would say that we could come back and bring back some of that analysis if the council asks us to.
So I guess what I'm alluding to is the fact that the landscape policy that was in play was very rigid, and it was in play for a very long time, and it, it took a Herculean effort to change it. And as we move down the road, if we see things that, hey, maybe we should rethink this, you know, there, there's a process to do that.
Yes.
Yes, and the intent of adopting it via resolution was to make it easier to do that.
Thank you.
So.
That's fine, you need to come up to the podium.
Yes, the, the original ordinance and policy was very rigid. And I, and to Tony's credit and Brian's credit, they, we talked, that was one of the things that we did talk a lot about, was to, to, to ensure there's flexibility in, in, in the plans that are presented from the HOAs and the various organizations that are presenting new landscaping plans. And so, you know, that's why the guidelines are, have a lot of selections of plants and a lot of ideas to inspire. And I think that that's where, I think that it's, it's not black and white, there's a lot of gray. And in, and it, and with the professional expertise of landscape architects and arborists and others that will be coming to present their plans to the city, we could come up with a good plan, get approval from, from Mr. Stewart and the committee. And I, I think that, I think this is a really good, good process to go through, because it's not that rigid anymore, and I think that there's, there's common sense, to put it, put it bluntly.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item number 12, which is to adopt a resolution granting special use permit number 25-23 for the City of Port Wainimi Run Walk For Your Heart 5K event with ancillary healthcare education booths, children's activity food, activity area, food vendors, and entertainment. Would staff like to present the report?
Hi, good evening. This is Jose Coyle, Associate Planner here at City of Port Wainimi. First of all, congratulations, Mayor Perez and Mayor Protem, Martha McQueen-Lejeune. Tonight before you is going to be a request for a special use permit 25-23 from the Port Wainimi Recreation Community Services Division for an event known as the Run Walk For Your Heart 5K. The request is to hold a public event, once again, Run Walk For Your Heart 5K. And this will feature a run-walk competition and a health wellness fair. The event will occur on Sunday, February 4, 2024, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. As part of the activities, there will be a wellness fair, which will include educational booths, a child's activity area, food vendors, and live entertainment. Continuing with the general information, this special use permit is brought to the council based on the event being proposed at the Wainimi Beach and Bubbling Springs Recreation Green Belt. And this permit is also exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, known as CEQA, as the project uses existing facilities, its minor and temporary use of the land, and conditions of approval ensure protections of the nearby environment. Fiscal impact, this is a city-sponsored event. Should this be approved, beach parking revenues will not be collected for beach parking lots A, B, C, and along Ocean View Drive. The event is expected to be offset by approximately $2,000 based on 200 race participants paying a registration fee of $10. Additionally, a request for a $3,500 appropriation of funds from the City of/Port Community Events Fund is also being requested. Strategic Plan Consistency. Optimal levels of service for residents and businesses. Support and establish programs and events that create a strong sense of community pride and a connection to our history and heritage. Now I'll transfer it over to Anna Hayley, Recreation and Community Program Manager, to go over the details of the events.
Thank you, Jose. Good evening, council, members of the public and staff. Before we review the proposed site plan and race route, I would like to take this opportunity to expand on the intention behind this event. Staff strongly believes that hosting our city's first 5K during the month of February holds the formula to seize a themed legacy event. February is Heart Health Awareness Month, and it also lends itself to Valentine's Day themes. Costume participation will be one of the engaging branding strategies that we use when promoting registration. This registration period will take place as everyone is making their New Year's resolutions. Promoting health and wellness packaged in a recognizable format that is a 5K alongside that thematic delivery of Valentine's Day fun is what will make this event distinctive, excuse me, distinctive within the county. There is no other agency currently utilizing this theme for this type of event. This is a great way to show love for our community, and what we mean by that is post-race activities could also include booths for not only health industry members, but service organizations that give back, in essence, demonstrating their love for the city in which we live and serve. An entire I Heart Port Wainimi campaign can be built from what could become an annual event that celebrates all the reasons that we love Port Wainimi. We're hoping to draw in regular racegoers, spectators, and members of the public that may only want to participate in post-race activities. As you can see on the site plan before you, we will have Ocean View Drive closed for people to queue up outside of Parking Lot C. After the race, Lot C will be bustling with health-centric food vendors, cornhole games, a DJ, craft stations for Valentine's that we hope to share with the senior members of our community, information booths from health education vendors, and service organizations that I previously mentioned. Staff is excited to present what we hope can become an annual event going forward, one to carry on the Port Wainimi-focused celebratory nature of what was experienced during this year's 75th anniversary event. So this is just a brief overview of what the race route will look like. That's how we're going to achieve the 5K distance. As far as the recommendation, it is recommended that the city council adopt the resolution that conditionally approves SUP number 25-23, and find the project to be categorically exempt from CEQA. Both Jose and myself are available for any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication as required by law and a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff? Only questions will be heard at this time. Comments and discussion will be heard later. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Perez. And thank you, staff, for your presentation. I'm looking forward to the event, but then I noticed it was a Sunday, and I'm like, I'm looking forward to the event, but then I noticed it was a Sunday and I'm at church on Sunday. Is there a reason that Sunday was chosen as a timeframe to conduct the event versus a Saturday?
We typically have rental events at our facility on Saturdays. And so for staff coverage reasons, it lent itself to the fourth. However, if that needs to be reconsidered under council's direction, we will do so.
Okay, the other question I had is this, is this event the event that is receiving funding from the Community Benefit Fund? So I didn't see that under fiscal impact.
Yeah, thank you. And I think, so this is one of two projects, one of two community events that we are proposing. The Community Benefit Fund this year approved some funding for two community events as long as they had an educational aspect to them, which is part of what drove us to add the, coordinate it with the health and wellness aspect. And so we, we are anticipating that this would be one of the two projects funded by the City Port Community Event Fund this year.
Okay, thank you, I have no more questions.
Mayor Protem? Thank you. We're going to open the public hearing and take public comment. The public.
May I ask some questions?
Oh, yeah.
It's okay. Will there, will there be an opportunity for sponsors in this event? Or is this just going to be City Port sponsored event?
There is an opportunity for sponsorship, so long as it falls within the guidelines we've received from city administration.
And then my second question is, are there also going to be stations similar to how the first Weneme Fun Run took place? Or is this just going to be just solely a run?
Sure, so we're hoping to expand the reach and make it an event that attracts typical racegoers by the packaging of it as a 5K. We were thinking that in, in regards to February and everything that it offered thematically, that we could switch gears and offer a Fun Run style event later as an intermural offering through the Recreation Division. But our focus for this rollout would be straightforward race.
When you say later, are you talking about the second event or for future times on this? Like, like, you know.
Future times within Recreation's purview.
Oh, okay. All right, because I know we, we did set aside money for two events, right? So.
Correct, so the, the Port City Benefit Fund funded two events. So I think the idea was one would be a straight up 5K for people who want the competition. And then the second would be more of a Fun Run type event.
Okay, this is, this is good, I like it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gama, do you have any questions?
Logistically, they'll start and finish at the same place?
They will.
Okay, and so then we'll have a turnaround point at some point, I mean, and.
We're intending to staff the race route with cooperative groups from our local schools and their sports teams. So just as you would see at water stations, a typical race events, last the cross country team from Weneme High School to work a water station. And those people, in addition to the volunteers that we'll have by way of the police explorers, will help guide people through the route itself.
So the sidewalk will be the route or?
Sidewalk is the primary route, yes. This will not go into the street. In order to meet the actual measurement required to get to the 5K, it, the walking path itself actually offers the best distance.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Yes, so have you, so you've already reached out to the high school, high schools?
Preliminary, we're, yes, the athletic director.
Okay, and then by any chance, is there going to be like a, like a big banner that maybe says start and finish? Or, you know, I'm, I'm just curious.
We're planning for a large scale inflatable starting and finish line as a part of our budget rollout. But really that theme of I Heart Port Weneme is something we really want to see take off. I think that's why for us, this, this lends itself as an annual promotional opportunity to share. I mean, we're thinking about doing social media and video clips where we're going around to every demographic within this city to ask them, why do you love Port Weneme? Tell us why you love this city. And then we get to shout it out and share it and see that just take shape. And as we have so much going on in the community right now, we can't think of a better way to start this year.
Love it. Thank you.
Great.
So something just came to mind. So my understanding is we're going to have runners, walkers, strollers, dog walkers, right?
All of them.
And they'll be segregated. And at the point where they turn around, and I'm just a little concerned that the runners are going to be running back and then having to migrate through the walkers, the strollers.
Logistically, I think we share some of those same concerns. But having been through the Fun Run at least once, we've had some exposure with this and it was successful. And it, it did prove to be smooth. But I guess I would afford ourselves the opportunity to try this year. And if we didn't need to make changes next year, we would act accordingly.
Just throw this out there, maybe one idea could be, if you're coming back, maybe try to have, have the two lanes.
Lanes.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And real quick, I'm drawing a blank, I can't remember. Are there going to be several heats or is it just going to be one heat?
Depending on the number of participants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions?
Good, okay. So we're going to open the public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing and take public comment. The public hearing is now open for public input at 8:25. Are there any public comments regarding this item?
No public comments.
So we'll close the public hearing, public input has concluded. I will now close the public hearing, the time being 8:25. We have before us a recommendation to adopt a resolution approving special use permit number 25 dash 23 Run Walk For Your Heart 5K and to find the project to be exempt from CEQA and take additional related action that may be desirable.
Move to approve? Second? We're excited.
Is there any discussion? Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say I really appreciate I, I Heart Weneme theme. I think it's a winner. I, I just have a good feeling about it and I appreciate the creative thinking behind it. So, yeah, I think it's great, thank you.
To add to that, I think Ventura does the same thing, I Heart Ventura. They have a day where everyone goes out and does something for Ventura. I like the theme as well. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McQueen-Lejeune?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you staff.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to business items. Number 13, to award a contract with PFM Group Consulting LLC for the preparation of an economic development plan.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to introduce our Community Development Director, Mr. Stewart, one more time. Then I think he's off after this. But just to walk through the background on how we started this economic development plan, project and the next steps.
So thank you again, I'm Mr. Vega, and good evening again, everyone. This will be much shorter than the last presentation. But staff tonight is requesting that the city council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with PFM Group Consulting LLC to prepare an economic development plan for the city for an amount not to exceed $115,090. Please note that the funds were previously budgeted for this project. So we're completely covered there. So as you recall back on September 5th, the city council authorized staff to request a request for proposals or RFP for this project. The closing date for the RFP was this past November 3rd. And the city actually received 14 proposals for this project from across the country, which is, everybody I've spoken to says that that is a great number to receive. The committee, there was a staff committee that consisted of City Manager Vega, our Finance Director, Ms. Sero and myself. We independently reviewed all of these proposals and we unanimously determined that the best proposal had been submitted by PFM. Not only did it look like PFM had done their homework and what the RFP said and addressed most everything, but they prepared a detailed plan for the project. And part of that detailed plan that was a little bit different from the others is that they also are proposing to have a subcontractor, Ariano Associates LLC, to prepare a thorough public engagement process for the project. And that will be bilingual. Furthermore, actually, right now, PFM is preparing similar plans for the city of Ventura. They're getting close to completion there as well as the city of Moore Park. And Ariano right now is leading the outreach for the Oxnard Airport Noise Study for the county. And actually, Mr. Coyle has been involved in some of the meetings with regard to that. So he's got some firsthand experience working with them. And so therefore, you know, the firms do have quite a bit of relative experience here in the county. And then finally, the project's engagement leader, Mr. Bill Fulton, who's sitting back here, should you wish to hear from him, introduction, whatnot, or if you've got questions, is a renowned planner, very well known statewide and actually nationally. But he's also a former mayor for the city of Ventura, so he's got a lot of local experience. And so it's great that he's on the team with us as well for this project. And so at this point, either myself or Mr. Fulton or Mr. Vega are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff at this time?
I always think if I did have a question, what would it be? And so my question is, where do you start?
Well, and that's what we're going to find out from, because really, if you think about it, you know, we, we've got, you know, the city of Port Weneme is very unique in our layout. You know, with the base and the port and just the way that we're physically laid out. But also we've got some serious constraints, primarily that we're so far away from the 101 freeway. We're completely landlocked. We have really nowhere to physically expand, so we have to grow up. We discussed our cannabis issues, cannabis business issues at the last couple of meetings, where we really do need to be looking at ways to basically move away from just that, but also grow our businesses here in the city, possibly get our Chamber of Commerce back and whatnot. So all of these were criteria that were listed in the RFP. And so again, through the proposal that PFM proposed to us, we're really excited to begin with this process, you know, talking with stakeholders and, and, you know, looking at, you know, doing a SWOT analysis and whatnot to find out again where really what, you know, we're really hoping that they'll come up with, you know, something, you know, they'll dig up some additional interesting ideas for us to move forward with. But it is going to be quite an undertaking. That'll probably take about nine months to go through before we have that study.
Are there any public comments regarding this item?
No public comments.
Thank you. The recommendation is to authorize entering into a contract with PFM Group Consulting LLC for the preparation of an economic development plan for an amount not to exceed $115,090. May I have a motion and a second?
I'm moved.
Perfect, any discussion?
Just want to say thank you to PFM and to Mr. Fulton for being here tonight. I know your reputation and I think that you're going to do a terrific job. I look forward to the stakeholder engagement discussion. I'm hoping that you'll have, make the opportunity to meet with each one of us during that so we can provide our ideas to you. So thank you so much.
Could we hear from, I'm sorry, I.
Bill Fulton.
Fulton? Yeah, would love to hear what, what you think of our wonderful little city and economic development therein.
Well, good evening, congratulations. Congratulations on a very smooth reorganization meeting. I've been through a couple of rocky ones, so, so. I think Tony said it well, where you start is what are your assets and then what do you have to work on? And you have tremendous assets in Port Weneme, especially your proximity to the, to the base and, and to the port. Part of the question is, how do you tie that economic activity into, to the benefit of the residents of Port Weneme more than is already the case? There were also a series of items in the RFP that Tony put in the RFP that we highlighted as well. The question of what to do with the beach is an unresolved question that was actually specifically stated in the RFP. One of the things that I'm very excited about is we have recently upgraded our technological tools to understand retail patterns more. And there's new technology available that can, can tell us precisely where, where people in Port Weneme go outside of Port Weneme to shop, to which store? And then we can begin to talk about what are the, what is, what retail activity can you generate inside Port Weneme? We're doing this in Moore Park right now. Obviously, there's a lot of, as with you, there's a lot of retail leakage there, the Seamy Valley and Thousand Oaks. And so we're trying to figure out what are the specific types of stores, restaurants, et cetera, that the residents of that city appear to want based on where they're going? And is it possible to attract those into the city? And I think we're going to, we're very excited to do the, the same thing here. Having lived in Ventura County for 20, I live in San Diego now, but having lived in Ventura County for 25 years, knowing it pretty well, having served on a variety of boards, including the EDC Board with many of your predecessors, I'm really excited to be here in Ventura County, here in Port Weneme. It's a great town, that's a great, I'm a runner, by the way, that's a great course you just saw. I'm very excited about that. And so to, to try to help Port Weneme knit its economic assets together more for the benefit of everybody in the town and actually for the financial benefit of the city as well, is something, is a, is, that's our basic challenge and we're very excited about it. So thanks very much for, for, for having me here tonight.
Thank you, and I, I'm pretty sure your work is going to be just as good as your articulation right now. I really appreciate hearing from you because that's such a fresh view and look and it's, it's very encouraging.
Yeah, well, well, as I say, it's, it's kind of a systematic process that we have to go through. And I, I neglected to mention, Tony mentioned, we did bring on Ariano. And it's very exciting to see, to see, Ariano's got some really great stuff lined up. Not only bilingual involvement, but a survey. They've got different ways of reaching out into the community, like I've worked with them before, that, that most, most firms don't have, so it's very exciting. Thank you, Member, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez for thinking it, for raising that particular point. Ariano's going to do a great job on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further? Okay, Madam Clerk, will you take a vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Harry, none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All right, item number 14 is the 2023 Weneme Beach Festival Summary and Feedback for 2024.
Thank you, and our, Mr. Perez is going to give a brief presentation on this. You may recall that we've sort of had a debrief on the beach festival with the Citizen Advisory Commission Committee. And so as part of this item, we're going to sort of do the wrap up of the beach festival and provide some of the information from the Citizen Advisory Committee and then talk about some options moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Perez.
Good evening, for the record, Deputy City Manager Charles Perez. Mayor and Mayor Protem, congratulations.
Yeah, is your mic on?
Have a note.
His mic is on, it's just a little low. I don't know if you turn your speakers on, if it would help.
Let me try it again.
That's better.
I didn't do anything different.
Closer to the mic.
I'll get very close, so. Once again, for the record, congratulations, Mayor and Mayor Protem. So as the city manager indicated, Agenda Item 14 provides a summary of the 2023 Weneme Beach Festival and seeks the council's direction regarding, regarding the planning and management of the event next year. In September of this year, the city council provided direction for the item to be reviewed by the Citizen Advisory Commission before returning to the city council. And that commission did review the item both October 9th and November 13th. So a quick overview, this year's two day event was held on August 26th and 27th and had an. This year's two-day event was held on August 26th and 27th and had an estimated attendance of about 19,000 to 20,000 people. The event was planned and managed by Reach via an agreement with the city, which included the development of an event budget, the execution of contracts for various festival equipment and services, overseeing sponsorship and vendor managers, coordinating marketing efforts, and providing onsite supervision. The city provided some staff support for the event, primarily in the form of police services, but also with representatives from Public Works and Recreation. Primary activities at the event, as we all know, included live music, food, beer and wine concessions, various carnival rides, chalk art exhibits, and we had a multitude of commercial vendors and nonprofit booths. Of course, the main stage provided the platform from which musical acts performed for the enjoyment of various event goers. But it also provided for the base of operations for other important elements of the event. Such as, it served as the location where individuals and groups that make significant differences in our community were recognized. Two examples shown here on the slide are the Surf Rider Foundation and the 2023 Weneme Hero recipient, Becky Bruning. The stage also served as the venue for city leaders, including council members and the city manager, to provide announcements and important updates about recent happenings and projects in the city. As noted earlier, we had an estimated attendance of about 19,000 to 20,000 people. With over 60 vendor booths, visitors had lots of opportunities to purchase a variety of goods and receive information about various resources provided by organizations in and around Port Weneme. So pursuant to the requirements of the agreement with the city, Reach prepared a post-festival financial reconciliation. That's included in Attachment C to the staff report. In summary, the event had a budget deficit of just under $46,000. On the good side, the event managers did a very good job of keeping control of event expenses. The deficit arose from significantly less than anticipated revenues in two forms. One, the revenue from dispensary sponsorships was less than anticipated. And the other area that we saw that was less than anticipated was revenue from the sale of wine and beer. And then the third element this year included an admin fee for Reach for conducting the event. That was an expense that had not been incurred in prior years. So those were the three reasons that the event had a deficit. In summary, the overall financial support from the city, in addition to the amount of the event deficit, was its annual contribution of $25,000. And the staff support, which it provides each year, this year that totaled approximately $27,000. As noted earlier in the presentation, the commission, the Citizen Advisory Commission, reviewed the item on October 9th and November 13th. The commission recommended that the next festival be locally focused, involve nonprofit and community groups, engage youth, utilize the beach as part of festival activities, and incorporate sporting events. The commission also suggested including agencies that provide important resources and services to the community, incorporating Navy and Schumacher themes, reducing the financial impact of the city, reducing the event to a one day, and ensuring that conflicts with other major events in the county are avoided. So this agenda item seeks to provide a summary of this year's festival and to obtain council direction regarding the planning of next year's event. Such direction will allow staff to better assess options for planning and managing the next event. The city has developed an RFP, which is attached to the staff report, and it's recommended that the city move forward with soliciting proposals. With council direction this evening, staff would continue to research the option of using internal resources, which appears that it may be appropriate for a smaller, more locally focused event, as well as proposals that may be received through the issuance of the RFP. So that concludes the staff recommendation. Mr. Vega and I are available for questions on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Parretts. Does council have any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Martinez.
I see that you've added more emphasis on the sand. How much of a push are you, have you thought about, you know, having the festival on the sand? Because that's, that's an idea that I've been wanting to push for a while, like, hey, we have a beach. Let's make the festival unique. Let's get it on the beach, like on the actual sand.
So that was specifically a concept, an idea that was raised by the Citizen Advisory Commission. I think that based on council feedback, that could take different forms. But preliminarily, ideas may include high school teams, such as the beach volleyball teams. We could have a sports-related competition on the beach. We could engage nonprofit groups. I haven't approached anybody about this, so these are top-of-mind ideas, and I know that we have Joan behind me. But my thought was, we could have beachfront educational forums from groups such as Surf Rider or others about environmental impacts and things that we can do to be more environmentally conscious. We could potentially use groups like Real Guppies and have competitions and/or exhibits on the pier. So those are ways to take it off of the concrete parking lot and roadways and bring it more on the pier and the beach.
So it hasn't been thought of, like, actually having the entire festival on the sand?
That would be a concept that we could take direction from council and consider. I think that there may be some logistical challenges to having some events on the sand. But the feedback that we got from CAC is we call it the Weneme Beach Festival, yet none of it is really on the beach. We did have a year where we had some sandcastle exhibits on the beach, but really primarily, it's, it's not on the beach, and the idea was just, what can we bring to the beach?
Thank you, Charles.
If I could add just quickly, that that's really one of the main points of the item today is, so we heard from the CAC what they, the elements that they want to see in the beach fest next year. And so we're coming back to the council and seeing if there's a consensus to make some of those changes to how it's been done. And we're trying to get ahead of the, of the beach festival and not have a situation, I think, similar to last year, where we were coordinating it fairly last minute. But it's, time's getting away from us, because we're already four months from the last beach festival and eight months until the next beach festival. So we're trying to kind of have this process where, where we went to the CAC, and now we're coming back to council. We want to get direction from council, and then based on that direction, we can put together our plan for how we're gonna, how we propose holding it. So, so that's really the exact kind of feedback we're looking for.
Another thought, kites. What about kites? I think that's a really good sand activity, appropriate for a beach. Maybe we could have some kind of kite festival, or maybe we could encourage local schools to, you know, fly a kite or make a kite. I don't know, but I think maybe that's something we could look.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Parretts. And thank you, staff, for the report and the RFP. I have a couple of questions. One, did staff ever do a cost analysis or prepared a budget that was realistic and included staff costs? So that we could actually cost out what, what this event could cost the city and how much money would need to be raised to implement it?
I think that's our next step. The first question is, like, what's the scope of what the council's looking for? And then once we know that, then we know what resources we would need to accomplish it. We provided the financial information from past beach fests, and they're not low-cost events. I think we average about, is it about $200,000 for, for beach fest?
Yeah, the, the expense side of the, of the event budget is more than that.
Yeah, and just, just as a comparison, some other cities in the county operate events for, you know, $30,000, $40,000, but they're smaller events. So, so we heard from the CAC that there is interest in bringing it back to a little smaller footprint, which, if we're able to make it a smaller footprint, then we can reduce some of those costs. And then, yeah, and one day was, was one of the things that the CAC talked about, a one-day event, which would lower the cost, but also lower the participation costs, which is something we heard from a lot of the nonprofits, that our participation costs were higher than comparable events. So if we get that direction, we would then put together a budget. The alternative would be to say, you know, we've done it the same way the last couple of years, and we want to continue to do, to do that. That's something that can be decided. But the, like we said, the CAC was recommending kind of changing that scope up a little bit. And it seems to match what we've heard from the nonprofits and some of the other participants as well, so.
I had some more questions. Did staff consider increasing the city's contribution? I think the $25,000 has been our traditional contribution. And with rising costs of doing business, is there a possibility we could increase that amount to something maybe, I don't know, if we want to double it, or maybe go up 30,000? But was there any consideration to doing that? Or maybe it just depends on where the budget figures line, how those line up?
It'll all tie out to what the final scope of it is, and then our budget that includes it. And that may be something we have to do, depending on what we choose to do. We may have to increase our, our contribution, so.
Okay, and then the timing of the, the beach festival. There were some considerations. Well, first of all, if we award the contract on March 5th, that only gives the contractor five months to implement the festival. And I believe that last year it fell on the date of the cornhole tournament at the fairgrounds. So that, was there any discussion on changing the date to maybe a later date?
Yes.
There's time to plan, and we don't conflict with other major events in the county.
Yeah, I think the CAC had recommended, and I think we would agree, that looking at going to one day and changing the date to not conflict with the cornhole tournament, which was just.
Massive, it was huge.
Yeah, huge competition for us this year. So I think we would agree with that. And if there's agreement to do that, then we'd come back with the proposal with some specific dates and things.
And then the idea of using in-house staff to organize, plan, and implement, is that without a contractor, is that, because I imagine even with a contractor, you're going to need staff to oversee the project.
Yeah, at this point, we were not ruling out either option. And partially, Mr. Parretts and I can tell you that we had sort of, if we were going to have the large-scale event, we were leaning towards going with contractor. But we've actually, we were looking at other cities who recently held events and recently tried to hire contractors, and we actually found that some of them weren't able to. And I think it was San Fernando, actually, that put an RFP out. And this is why we're saying we want to get ahead of it and kind of have our, our time to solve this. But I think it was San Fernando put an RFP out, didn't get any responses, and then didn't have the time to come up with Plan B, so they had to just cancel their event. And so it's just such a weird time right now with contractors and everything. It's, we're still not really back to the normal pre-COVID, where you'd put an RFP out and expect to get bids. And so for us, because of that, we were looking at both options. And depending on what the scope was, we would put a proposal together while we're getting, while we're putting out the RFP, to see if we get a better proposal. And then we'll bring those back to the council, and then we'll have, we'll be able to decide. So the intent tonight was not necessarily to exclude one or the other. It was basically to get moving on both of them.
All right, thank you. And I like the idea of the, doing something on the sand. One person who is interested in bidding on the, the RFP suggested a concert on the beach, an actual concert on the beach, a stage on the beach, so. I don't know how Joan would feel about that, but, oh, there she is. So anyway, okay, very good, thank you. I have no more questions.
What, you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. And I guess the list, list wasn't vetted for the best opportunities. It was just a list of everything that CAC provided, because there was, one says overall focus on Port Weneme, but one says regional draw, maximum attendance. So I'm, I, I'm good with the one day, I think, on the beach. Having volleyball and other soccer, whatever you want to do is a great idea, so I would like that. The one day, I think, is a really good idea. I think we would have to determine whether a Saturday or a Sunday would get the most draw. And I think last year, I don't know that we even kept track, but it seemed like most of the folks that come are actually outside of Port Weneme. They're not actually from Port Weneme. So we have to make sure that we're really reaching out further than just our local community. Yeah, so I think they, they provided some great ideas. What I don't see is, and I, I think I read it through the item, but entertainment. I think a lot of people come for the entertainment. And so we have to make sure if we draw from locally, we really have to bring some really good entertainment to, to help get the people here, so, yeah.
Something that may be in consideration, maybe we could end the day with a high-quality band, maybe with a stage against the pier, maybe even take it, take it to the evening. Because I really like what we see when we do a movie on the beach. You know, we have so much participation, people love to come lay their towels out, sit on the sand. So maybe, maybe that's an idea we could look at, is like, have a really headline band, maybe have a stage against the pier where we could close it out with a really nice concert of sorts.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments for this item?
One public comment from Joan Tharp.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council staff, again. So I just wanted to comment about the timing, and Mr. Vega is right. You don't have a lot of time to figure things out. But one of the biggest concerns, or one of the bigger concerns, was the conflict with the fair as well. There was some conversation about it being so close to the beginning of school year, that people were looking at their finances and allocating them maybe not to go out to a festival, because they had school concerns, and then they wanted to go to the fair, or whatever. So I know it was maybe tossed around that it would be earlier in the year, but like after school, or after school's out, before the Fourth of July, or after the Fourth of July and before the fair. But again, I know there's a time constraint, but, you know, sort of looking at the other events that are happening in the county, I think is, is really important to get the draw. And we talked about, I think it was talked about local. It was more like local county, not so much local Weneme. But not trying to go out and make a big festival to draw people in from LA or wherever else. I mean, if they come, that's great, but it was more of the focus, sort of a more local county deal. So, thank you.
You. So the recommendation is to.
Sorry, Mayor, we just got another comment from Becky Bruning.
Congratulations on your elections. As the Chair of the CAC, we did talk about entertainment. We talked about using the local kids from the high schools. We talked about the local kids with their dance classes. We want to try to keep this local. And that's why we discussed it that way. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. The recommendation is to receive an informational report about the event details associated with the 2023 Weneme Beach Festival, and to provide direction and feedback to staff regarding initial planning for a 2024 Weneme Beach Festival for consideration, while staff analyzes options for event coordination, which would include potential in-house event management. Staff recommends that city council also authorizes staff to issue the attached request for proposals as a contingency plan. Staff will return to council with options at a future city council meeting. May I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion to.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations, including moving the festival on the sand on a one-day event, keeping it low cost with kites and all kinds of sorts of activities on the beach, sand castles, volleyball.
I actually would say just, I'm sorry, I know there's a motion on the floor, but hearing what everybody's saying, it's really in line with what we were hearing from the CAC and what we were talking about. So I think this feedback is very helpful, so.
So my motion is to approve the recommendations, including the CAC recommendations.
Second? Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Great. Madam Clerk, will you please take a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, staff. Mr. Pretz. City Manager Comments and Reports is up next.
Somehow we went too fast. I wasn't ready yet. Wasn't expecting that. One of the items is now not timely. We were going to note that we were coming up on our last couple of days of the Santa float schedule. But as we mentioned earlier, because of the rain, we crammed it in today. So hopefully people saw that. And maybe actually the good note to make here is that we are really putting an emphasis on using our social media, our rec Facebook page, our city Facebook page and our Instagram pages. So we're putting that schedule up every time there was a change. So people who want information can check there and get the latest. Another thing we're going to be putting out probably tomorrow is some of our flood preparation information and in particular availability of sandbags, which we typically get a lot of calls for. So we'll be posting that information tomorrow, noting where, when and where we'll have sandbags available. And we expect to have some of those within the city for this rain coming up, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add at this time.
Perfect. Are there, we're going to move on to Councilmember reports and comments. We start with Councilmember Martinez.
I don't think I have much to say. I don't have any comments right now. Thank you, Mayor Perez.
Councilmember Gama.
Congratulations, Mayor Perez and Mayor Protem. Really look forward to the next year. It goes by really fast, you could ask the three of us. And it's a wonderful honor to have you there. So I attended the Beacon meeting and really impressed with progress that Beacon's making in, in the priorities that they're working on. I'm a member of the Executive Committee and so we're thinking about the future. Making Beacon cheaper, faster, better to help each of its members deal with the coastal issues that are coming. And one thing that we understand at Beacon is every zone is different. And so what works in one area doesn't work in another area. And another great success about Beacon is it's kind of like our lobbying to the California Coastal Commission, because unfortunately, a lot of times the California Coastal Commission treats every ocean, beach, community the same. And we know they're vastly different. And so we're looking at more grants to help the members of Beacon be more adaptive, reactive to their coastal adaptation plans. They had a summit, a scientist summit recently. I wasn't able to attend, but they're hearing from the greatest minds out there and how to deal with, with all the issues that's confronting coastal communities. We're looking at beach access issues amongst the, the members of Beacon. Again, access is very different depending on what coastal area you're going to. And we learn a lot from Santa Barbara and Ventura and Oxnard and then Port Huaynimi. And grants, working with grants and partnership to expand the Kelp Forest Project, which is a really, really cool project that Beacon's been working on for a number of years. And for those of us who are 60, like me, if you remember pre El Nino, there was kelp forest out there, like a lot of kelp. And kelp is very important to keeping sediment close to the beach. And the kelp forests pretty much got decimated with El Nino during that period of time. So Beacon's really working to find the best techno, technology and services to benefit its members. And there's a lot of science involved. And working with L State University, Channel Islands has been a really good partnership. And so we're, we're excited about the next year. And then later on in the agenda, I hope to bring a concept for a Memorial Day celebration called Lost at Sea. And I think it's most appropriate for this area because of the Navy, the port and our proximity, our proximity to them. So I'm going to be making a request to agendize a planning for a Memorial Day celebration, hopefully in the Lost at Sea, so we could do it down at the beach on the pier. I think it would be a really good thing for our community and that we could bring all our Navy partners and the port and everyone together down at the pier for a great Memorial Day celebration.
Is it okay if I say a couple of words? I think it just kind of, same thing happened to me, it happened to Manager, City, City Manager Vega. Just want to mention, today I brought my class, a couple of my classes today to council chambers. We took them on a port tour, we took them on a water treatment tour and they loved it, they were excited. And they want to know where I'm going to take them next. I also want to mention that the Sister City Met was successful. We got ourselves a president, a secretary, a vice president and a treasurer. Becky's still here. And she's our treasurer. And I also want to mention that our next meeting is January 3rd. If anybody's interested in joining the Sister City, our Sister City here in the city of Huaynimi with Puerto Vallarta. And then the last, and then two more things I want to say. Basketball, the last day for basketball open gym is tomorrow at the Boys and Girls Club from 6:30 to 8:30. So if anybody wants to take advantage of that before the holidays. And then the last thing, I just also want to thank Scott for helping us with the video and City Manager Vega. You guys were super patient with me. I know I'm like super picky with the videos, but we, we, we made it happen in a really fast, really quick turnaround. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Perez. And thank you, Councilman Gama, for mentioning the Beacon meeting. I also attended, I had a hard time though hearing, I guess there was some issues with the mic. If people don't talk right into the mic, you can't quite hear. There was an also a follow-up question I submitted to Mark Baylor about Ormond Beach. I understand that there's some plans around Ormond Beach, doing a collaborative of some sort, bringing all the interested parties together. And Beacon, I believe, is considering taking the helm on that. So I was glad to hear that. I just have a couple of items and I'll try to be quick. The, last night, I attended the longest night in Oxnard at the Plaza Park. I was there with Supervisor Viana Lopez and Patty Kiras, representing Assemblyman Steve Bennett's office. And it was a memorial service for people who have passed away. These are people who were, whose families, they had been estranged from their families possibly, and they had, they had no families around them. These were also people who were without a home, people with, who were homeless. And it was pretty powerful memorial service. And I just wanted to share with this council that I hope in this next year that we can find other ways that we can do our part in assisting the homeless. I know that we rely a lot on the county and the continuum of care to bring resources into our city. But perhaps there's more we can do. And it's, last night was just a reminder that we need to continue to do our part in assisting the homeless here in Port Huaynimi. We also had a situation in my neighborhood recently with a prowler, actually a potential burglar. Pictures were captured on ring, on the ring system and this guy looked pretty scary. He had caught a picture of him with a crowbar. And I'm just really glad that we have a Neighborhood Watch group and we have Sue Cabell and her husband David, who have served as the leaders on our Neighborhood Watch group for many, many years. And they are been, they've been really great at sharing information, not only with our residents, but with the neighboring associations that live, that border our, our complex. And I'm glad the Chief of Police is here because early in the year when he was, when you were first here, Chief, I brought up the idea of reinstituting the Neighborhood Watch program in the city. And I, I still would very much like to see it. It's such a good way to get information out. And it might even be a place for Huaynimi Coalition to have a role. And that is, you know, focusing on safety and, and crime in our neighborhoods. I think the, the sharing of the picture of this individual was very helpful. And it, and it was, it sent out a good safety message to our neighbors. And I think with the help of our PD and having a Neighborhood Watch program, we can improve safety in our communities. So something to think about for the new year. And I did have a question for City Manager Report. Do we, it was so nice to see the city council members from the other cities show up tonight and recognize the outgoing Mayor, Mayor Protem. Do we do that for other cities?
We prepare certificates, but I don't think we historically have actually gone to participate in their meetings. And I'm looking to the clerk to confirm.
So at times, other cities will reach out. They don't always reach out. I know the city of Camarillo recently had reached out, but it was a very late deadline. I guess they had some movement in the City Manager's office. But we did send the city of Camarillo some certificates.
Very nice. I hope that we can do more of that. Also, I spent some time watching the Measure U Committee. If you have not watched it, it's a good way to learn more about our budget. And I want to thank the members who are serving on that committee. They are doing a great job and asking all the right questions. I also want to thank staff for the holiday events that they put on this year. I know it's a lot of work, the float, the senior luncheon. Unfortunately, we didn't have the cops for tots this year. But for all the other holiday events that were planned, just, I just want to say thank you to staff for putting those together and making our community, having our, making sure our community has a happy holiday. Yeah, let's see, is there one? Oh, the meeting, our next meeting on January 16th, right? So there's no meeting on the 2nd?
Correct. Next meeting is January 16th.
16th. Do you think that's going to be the meeting where we select committees?
Yes, that's, that item is scheduled for that meeting.
Okay, I kind of screwed up. I planned a, a trip to Vietnam on the sixth, leaving on the 16th, thinking we were meeting on the 15th, and I totally forgot it was Martin Luther King Day. How can I go about submitting my request for committee assignments? Is that something I can submit in writing? Because I, I won't be here on the 16th.
Looking to the city attorney for a way to do it within the Brown Act.
The Brown Act simply prevents a quorum of the legislative body from communicating with each other. I think submission of written requests to the City Manager to be discussed at the meeting is appropriate.
Okay, very good, thank you. That's all I have. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. But I meant to bring this up at the last meeting. The 2023 State of the Region Report is out. I only have one hard copy, which I'm holding on to because it's like an atlas, what do you call it? An encyclopedia, yeah, you could call it that, or an atlas or something like, not really an atlas. I'm looking for something else, the other word. But anyway, it has a lot of good stats in here and you can download it from the Ventura County Civic Alliance website if you're interested in doing some research or you want some stats for anything that you're working on. It's a really good report.
Mr. Gama, did you have something else to add?
Yes, I pulled a City Manager Vega, I wasn't ready and I forgot something I was going to say. Last meeting I fumbled in my comments. And what I tried to articulate was that with the state of California rescinding jaywalking laws, it seems to impact minority communities most. And what I've been noticing, I go to work early in the morning in the dark and there's so many people walking around that aren't high vis. So many times, I'm so, whoa, there's a person right there. So what I was trying to articulate is maybe we could try to develop a pedestrian safety plan, advise something to just get on the minds of our community that's heavy on walking, how to do it safely. Because I tell you, I'm so startling at 5:00 in the morning when, you know, and there's so many, you would, there's so many people walking at night. So anyways, I apologize for fumbling last meeting, but that's kind of, hopefully, maybe somewhere down the road, we could start thinking about how to make pedestrian safety a priority in our city.
Almanac.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez for mentioning the memorial. I was reading an article the other day and in a VC Star. And it said that in Ventura County, there has been either 120 or 130 deaths of homeless. And I didn't know that. And so it really makes you more aware when you see people on the street, so. Yeah, that just shocked me. Anyway, I have attended my committees. I was appointed or elected to the Vice Chair on the GCTD Committee. So that'll start in January for one year. I attended the December 7th meeting that I mentioned in our last meeting about the budget request for RDP. We didn't have a quorum, so we could not approve what the numbers, proposed numbers are. So we'll be going back on the 11th of January to look at that again. So hopefully we'll be able to, I'll be able to share something with you. We had a museum governance committee meeting this week, last week, that I think went really well. I want to thank Charles and Anna, who has, it doesn't seem to be here now, but for the research and the many options that they've been bringing to the committee. We are looking at opening in the next five or six months. And so excited about that. I think her name was Adele, came and provided. She is, works for a museum and has a lot of important information that she's been sharing with us. So she's brought us some wonderful ideas. I think we're going to be excited. People are going to be excited to come to our museum once it opens. For, let's see, VCTC. I just wanted to share that a couple of things that they have won 14 consecutive years, the Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, so that's, that's a big deal. And then they also won this year the Transit Agency of the Year in the Oxnard Transit Association Small Operators Award. So they're doing big things. And so that I think is all that I have to share tonight. Thank you.
I attended the EDC Executive Committee and I just wanted to make note for anyone who wanted to attend. Their 27th Annual Meeting is coming up on January 18th at the Zakari Dunes there at Mendelley Shores in Oxnard from 3:00 to 8:00. So if you want to attend that, get your tickets purchased. And that's all I have.
Madam Mayor, I have one more item, if you don't mind double, letting me double dip here. The Mural Committee, I know that the City Manager sent out a request for us to submit names of those in your circle who would like to serve on the Mural Selection Committee. I submitted one name. So if you could please remember to get your names into the City Manager, it would be much appreciated.
And, and we, as of right now, we have almost everybody. And we, as of right now, we have almost everybody. So, so it's, I think we asked for it by December 31st from everyone.
Now we're going to move on to requests for future agenda items. I'd like to remind council members that all requested items will require a motion, a second, and majority vote per adopted council policies to be placed on future agenda. Does anyone have any requests?
Yes, I would like to request agendizing a Memorial Day celebration in the theme of Lost at Sea.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Memorial Day is on May 20-
We'll try to have that item back, knowing that there's a deadline on that, so.
Councilmember Martinez, do you have any agenda items?
No, Mayor.
Councilmember Hernandez?
No, but I would like to see us, well, yeah, I'd like us to do some goal setting with the new year, so that we can get these kinds of requests done early in the year, and they don't come up mid-year, and then we pressure staff to, into an emergency situation, trying to put something together for us.
I'll second that, that's a good idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
I don't know if this needs to be an agenda item, but as we continue to talk about having events on the beach, can we get a status of the ADA map?
Yes, we can, we can provide an update on that. I think without being an agenda item, we could just provide an update on that.
Anyone else? All right, I'd like to remind everyone that due to the holidays, there is no council meeting, the first meeting of January, and due to Martin Luther King Day, the next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, at 6:30. So this meeting is now adjourned. The time is 9:21. Oh.